Babimoni liyolowo, oyole shishyolowo, babimoni liyoloro, oyole ri niyolola, koli niyofanda ri niyoloro. Omantaa babin layoruba, ye komo ti funta de ho nga chati she layoruba de kunde le. To fumai tan, ongori so inlayoruba, ata wan bito she moyagun, to nungo ne layoruba. Eh we ninjeka waterfall, ke tungo kogusi, ne bito miggona ti tu tutikpade, idarehili ne nuodongo. Atoke o numalakba laké. Nani, 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 ongani la, nani. Idi agani yi, tiyoruba Nation Global Directorate. Si dieto kona ban de kale, ni beboadua bameta, odio Saturday, fun beboama yoruba. Lati keko meko, kodma madon, nekba sha iše, itan išedale, ati okonororo, nekma yoruba. To fumontoro maydagnbara, furilede yoruba. Eh shama be, biyolo diobaku, odudu reo ne uko liko. I see the best like boundary, one way come here, only to ngo ye du si bani. Darapolo rikani YouTube, ni beboadua Saturday, ne dediago metosone Nigeria. Tabi ekoda rapolo rizoom, via tadi she mofa rapolo. Lacha, solikani emaili yi, yorubanesionglobal.d@gmail.com. Ikani yorubanesionglobaldirectorate, layo tirigo lori YouTube. Orishi rixya ledu, to diododma, tonima, to todban basun loye, nauma bapa de, la so se. Fun idani lakó, ongoro ye du, ati oronekma ilosi wadu, ati akiti nyandukba omenira ile yoruba. Je ka dhopade, ne bidan lakó, to diabameta to seyi, kekulekba koso funto ko, be akifari la yoroli, eh ni toninko da, onu oshimbé. Yoruba one kano, yoruba onirenyilayla, yorubanesionglobaldirectorate, lolo kedi.
Good evening, Los Angeles. I say good evening, Los Angeles. Good evening, ladies. We're gonna welcome into the stage, the one and only, Asitros in the family. Highland man.
Ekku wajubobwe leo, edjo ema kusuru, ah, ekusuru edjo ema bino, omi omogatisha leo. Login time, what I, sorry, I wanna know African time, we can't hear what it is. Two o'clock, but even at that, it will have been almost two hours, hour you feel late. Our only problem for login in. So please bear with us, and we've been working at the back end. To make sure that people were able to, are able to overcome those challenges. Ashigong, adupwe fu ori of etani, tatu pejolini, 200 meetings. Omalpe, it is not he that we let not run it, but God who has shown us mercy. The Bible says the battle is not to the strong, neither the race to the swift. But we all give glory to, for what God has done, and what he's doing, and what he will continue to do. Lini, mofi be, aru fayom, opé, me, yorubadeni, opé olori, adad, atoni. It's good to maintain the attitude of gratitude, because a terrible warrior no, yorubani, amomi ba. So ini, odio edupweni, regardless of whatever challenges that we may be going through, and we believe be, we shall overcome. Muba, oloye sondi mo, sorrow, he will be with us, oh, we're from the airport to the house. So he will join us at the point. And Baba Liu, as we're talking, is also trying to log in, if he hasn't done that already. So everything is okay, and Baba Wadetewa, Niyoko, and all the other members. So what I would all just to do is, tabanya wanyo takwe, Tony, difficulty lati wali. Thank you, sister, you know more messaging, we signing without any difficulty, but apparently, a lot of people are still having the challenges of logging in. So edeka sixty-one, yorubani, awulumba onigbo, ti awobaba onigbo, awa teni. Like, tori akinrojo musuluku, regardless of whatever problem we may have. I believe be, one two, is a majority, indeed, one in, one with God is a majority. So we chango tipele ni, apo, apo, kodun, kopo, kope, olua de mafuwa. So edeka bere, ipadi teni, one ikatou bere ngobo, kagokofiti, olu asiwaju. Ani ori of epe, one of our brother, one of our brothers, who actually is in a place that God has anointed him, eni amiruru olon, mowala niwala tifi, adura, wiwa wali. Ah, ni unisetsitu ekowali, ifa soses, owa ni meeting konon. But totally join wa along the line, wah join wa boti. Bayi, ani bay mitu, toje musulumi ododo, oh, kinshi murikeo, oni, olodo do ni titi won. Modrette, Islam, Omar Badura, Lenti, Babawa, Dr. Akintayo, tawati pray for wa ton. Edje kim pray, Dr. Akintayo, kong Badura for wa, kafi wali. Over to you, sir.
Adukwelo olon. Edeka Badura. Eni ya ibama anyeluwa ni tori yorire, ati ni tori, ito jure, ne, ori bebe ne ya. Olono wadukwelo anye, adbiroka anye ga, fun anutefidawasi. Bapa ju lo adupwe fun, epade yi, teje kosheshi. Eno walo wa lati, padé, fun, iba, akoko iba, adukwelo anye, ogoniforoka anye. Eni ya ibama anye oluwa, furire, lori awa oma eda. Okweyi, atola ne amua Baba. Eni ya ibama anye oluwa, furire, awa oma eda. Okweyi, atola ne amua Baba.
Adeluya.
Baba wadukwelo anye, adbiroka anye ga. Kegbe asikoni no, iwe oni daffidi, ori keta denia dafa, wa ran seven. Esu kafe opé fun lua, ni toriti o she, ni toriti ano re duro layla. Iwe samu yisofunwa wipé, awama israeli wa niyajjo, lati be kade bo miona, wa ribi furile. Wa ni, lati be kade bo miona, wa roinjeje. Bebe leso opé ebikpa wa, onbegbe wa, wa si kekwe olon, olon si shanofunwa. Adukwelo anye, wipé, fun, odundie se ye, niyatin kekwe ye, nepa inyajjo wa kegebe, oma le yoruba. Orishi ya wakalun shele, tikuduma wanino. Aweni ya mi, wa toje opé, ememi, ememi watijabo, aweni ya mi wa toje opé wa ino ya shido. Aweni ya mi na wa, toje opé, ato be kade bekan niwa lo, wa legbele, ni tori opé ileoto, iluoto, aduboto. Olua adukwelo anye, pe edemewasi. Awana kekwe ye, kegebe ome sheshe kekwe ye, ni no iwe oni daffidi yi. Wa kekwe ye, indati ebikpa wa, tionbegbe wa, esida wa lon. Olua adukwelo anye, pa wa natin kekwe ye, adba dopé eh udawa lon. Ati ne wala yi lon ni, idine opé edawa lon, niroko jesu oluwa adba pe wa. Olono wa awasi wajuni ya kukoi, afi ilewa leyin lawo. Onkonti abafi leyin lawo, kuki mbaje. Olua afi ilewa leyin lawo, abere funabo, to, 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 to daju ni uri ile yi. Olua, adbadura fun ori ofenye, kuma posi, neyoruba. Olua afi enekoka, ati dele koka, neyorubaleyin lawo. Abere funabo, abere fun, ori ofenye, abere fun itesu waju, olua ema wapeluwa. Olua adbadura, afi edbe yi, gaga leyin lawo, edbe tin she epade, nepa abi, awenyewsimantesu waju. Tikoni si la, ilahilo, tikoni man si ishoro, tikoni man si wahalama. Olua afi edbe ileyin lawo, olua ema edbe isi waju. Libon ti wonelo, lati man, je kim kama lodede, naani, aweni ya wa, olu ema keshire funwa. Olua kegebe asikoni no, iwe oni daffidi yi, osa wipé, wa kekwe ye, esida wa lon. Olua adbadura, ba nashin kekwe ye, olu ema edawa lon. Men. Ni no esekes, osa pe, you satisfy the longing soul, and you fill the hungry with goodness. Olua adbadura, wipé dugo, ibiti bata tintan, wenya wa lesé. Lati odro madeni, titi de abba, titi de awa ba, titi de awa jo ye. Titi de awa, awo jishé joba, titi de awa edbe. Bebo biti bata tintan wa lesé. Olua adbadura, niroko jesu, olu ebaba wa da wa duro. Eda obu biti bata tintan wa lesé duro, olu ebasi alafé afun esewa. Olua awa edbe kawa, tionle losokuma, ni tori opé erumbawa. Awa edbe kawa, toje opé wa le losokuma, ni tori opé inkankuwa ti bage. Olua adbadura, eh yiti eda israeli bada, si ibito ye kunguwa. You satisfy the longing soul, efunwa niyonge, efunwa niyo, me, adbadura fa wa edbe wa, wa yi. Libon katwa ti sono, olu ebaba ada bada funwa. Olua adbadura fa wa odowa, niyelewa, tionda ti tionti ri she, olua abere fun ofunwa. I shareere, olu ebaba keshire funwa. Adbadura fa wa toti ndaba, toti ye koma ni dele ti wa, shiba wa ni dele, ni tori opé kosowu, ni tori opé kosi alafé, ni tori opé erumbawa. Olua adbadura, we, kekwe ba edbe wa wo, nimbi shoro ti woni. Olua adbadura fun itesu waju, to do, itesu waju, itesu waju, to dara, olu edje koma wakoluwa. Our Father and God want to thank you. We glorify your holy name for your peace, for your grace upon the land. Father, we bring the land unto you again. Lord Jesus, visit us. Everlasting Father, help us. Father, relieve us of all the pain and anguish and trouble that we've been having over the years. Let there be peace in that land. Father, speak peace unto us. The Bible says in Isaiah chapter forty, that, that comfort ye, comfort ye, my people says the Lord. Comfort ye, my people, say that their battles are over. Lord, we pray for our people at home, our people in the city, our people in the diaspora. Lord Jesus, we pray that you speak the word of comfort unto us, that our battles are over, in the name of Jesus. Having starting the 200th meeting today. Father, I want to pray that what will be seen from now on will be victory. What will be seen from now on will be peace. What will be seen from now on will be advancement. What will be seen from now on is restoration. What will be seen from now on is the voice of newborn babies, the voice of bride and groom, the voice of people getting their jobs done, the voice of people completing their studies, the voice of new entrepreneur in our land, in the name of Jesus. Father, I also pray against crime in our land. We pray, from now on, Lord, we pray that criminal activities will reduce, and at some point, we stop completely in our land. There will be peace in our land. No more criminal activities in our land, in the name of Jesus. Let there be peace, let the Prince of Peace come and visit us, and stay with us forever, in Jesus' name. Father, I want to say thank you for this meeting. Thank you, Lord, for our leaders in this meeting. We pray for your grace upon them, grant them wisdom. You ask Solomon to ask you for anything that he wanted, he asks for wisdom. Father, we are asking for our leaders in this town hall meeting. Lord, we pray that you grant unto them wisdom that they need, to lead this group forward, and to lead the entire Yoruban nation forward to the glory of your name. So that we reach a good destination, which you have had in mind for us for ages. Help us to reach this good destination, Lord. Father, our people will live in, in peace, they will live without fear, and they'll be able to serve you, and be able to advance and prosper in the land that you have given unto them. Thank you, Father, we bless your holy name, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen, amen. Thank you very much, doctor, God bless you, sir. We appreciate and love you. Do you want to please appreciate the doctor? Out of a very busy schedule, he's been able to join us today. So let's appreciate him, please.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Ashigong.
Thank you, sir. Ashiyo. Bless you. More anointing.
Lo, am, olon atiboma, swagwa, aduto funwa, sir.
Ashigong.
Thank you, sir.
Ashigong, bless her. Thank you very much, ma.
Ashigong, one ni akini, apa, babakama nitiya. Wode niya, wodo dakwa, apa, konkafi konchile. Neleyoruba, we are very, very liberal society, we're highly hospitable, and bashi birola she biom, kosi ayi. Tu ba, awenyato ba, embrace one another. Pe lui diyi, mofe pe, bay mitu, ki awonawa ba fiti esin, nepa ti ilanoti musulumi. Ki woba wa fit Badura, niyemi, bay mitu. Edjo egun, soke, eh, nirujuman, because la mpayi awonawa la, wa chepe, wa li login. Be lu nomaa, login details, wa chepe, wala tifi telephone pe bolini. One ni olon, goba cha, rita risha weni. Bi ashi rojuno, abomo, ninwe mi, are da ra, wala tishi, ami. She adra tonbaba, bay mitu, over to you.
Okay, ausu bilame, neshetan rajin, isunla ramani rahim. Adukwelo olon, pe, bubutan chi, yi, lori pe, ki awa yu, ba, kagbara wa le, kama tijoba wa. Bo bubutan fe, tri amora, anpa de lori zoom na, nipawon, isna oriyoda, ni different platform. Olon dakwa, bubutan chi yi, afili elowo, wolo batuda wa, wolo mowa, wolo mowa. Omantaa magi, omantaa, wolo ba na, obeni, oba, la, wodeluma, sitilayla. Bugu akiti nyawa lori pe, yo go yo, bama pang, ori le wa to da, si la wa. Anka anpe niyore wa, diyo na ni kama, kaya woku la u, be walo wa u, bubu antang goku tiwa. Da niya yo ba ra wa, toje kwa tunsia ta kufunwa. Olon dakwa, ba, che, glori u, after na tiso be, adeko be. Eh, ma, so pe, kati, wana judan, la mlegali guna, kolon duwa, buli, ango, sa wa niya. Ota yobani, ota ibo niyo, ota ausani, ota flani, ota kota, tori ori le wa la wa, sa de ngdiwa. Eh, je ka lorda, po, depe tamari, onjeje. Sanche bubu to uwa, anbuwa pa, anbuwa, anbaranson, anbaranson, ta kufa lo mina, but, ah, laga. Lorikini, security ye, olie everybody, krundi, bubuwa la ti tandasi, niyape pa, loli, ah, ilelo, tori be. Eh, yangbele, amasa pe, wa la, wa liya. But, not a body, lele teki, bubu hiti, tongwa amile. Olon dakwa, wala ti to be, wala pe, ok, kampi, kanidi, barawa. Ki becha yoman, yo ba, o da, lo diwa di, o landu. Most of all, sa wa, sa de konsepe, uta ape dienle ni. But, tori atambolle yi, ta sepe, ja, ja, ille, olon dakwa, ba, che, glori onta wa. Bugu antang goku tiwa, antang dipe, yangge wa, ta tunda kuya, ente, te, 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 fi, fi, ribi, wa, wa. Olon dakwa, ba, che, yi, ok, yo, lo, kampada. Eh, eh, bubu emi, afemi, afemi, bam bam ni moyo, me ma fe mi, ebikpame ni koka. Olon dakwa, bami, kulu le mi, ba, olon, kano, kya wa mekulu, awata, tiya, niyagbara. Olon, tu je kwa, ya, pe, to, ilaya yo, mo, tori, awa bele ni. Ah, gulo pe to, basi bele, olan koki lo ma chele. Bugu le yi, kati, olon, te kati ne, pana are, eh, pana mama me, boche, pana are ne. Edje kanipara wa, olon dakwa, tiwa le, moche, aloji, ma, doji, adra tiwa. Asi, wana judan mi, eleven tan, isunla ramani rahim. Wana judan na, la mlegali guna. 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 Alifatya, salatimi fati, bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillahirabbilalamin. Araa amani arahim. Maliki yamidin. Iyaka na abudu wa, iyaka na sain. Idina sirata almustaqim. Siratan lazina anyamta alehim. Gairili manglubi alehim, waradholina, amina. Allah mansalih, Allah sa idina, Muhammad lipati, lima ugrika, wali aatibi lima sabaka. Na suru le aatibi, le aatiba, le adi alasikamusaqim. Wa alali, yakankadi, wa, dali aatim. Subhanu rabbi, qarabbilusati, amoyasipun. Wasalam ala musalina, alhamdulillahirabbilalamin. Allah amina. Olon dakwa, bantuwa, anduina, je kuda, kweni, koka, wa, ta wa, ti dele wa, ita aliwe de, ta, ta, igude. Ta, no funwa, tiwa le, moche, aloji, eh, akolati to be, be. Eh, eh, bubu, aga, kanti, bantuaju, eh, olon ba, funwa, ba, mlo, da, ti, ma, ta, duwa, wa, la ya. Fatya, bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillahirabbilalamin. Araa amani arahim. Maliki yamidin. Iyaka na abudu wa, yakana sain. Idina sirata mustaqim. Siratan lazina anyamta alehim. Gairili manglubi alehim, waradholina, amina, amin. Amin, subhanu rabbi, qarabbilusati, amoyasipun. Wasalam ala musalina, alhamdulillahirabbilalamin. Solu ala ramidikati, Allah ta Allah ali wasalam. Adwa, wakba, lakba, idumari. Eh, a, a, happy, happy 200, eh, 200, eh, town hall meeting.
Ashigong, thank you very much, bay mitu. Eh, ele dumari, agbadura wa, olon konla, oni olon wa, kude se, kuse de ti ugo, oluda bubwe ide. Eh, bi asiwani, asiku, adura. Bugu wa la joma badura yi. Eh, oshi pataki, toje wipé, awon iyon. Ni, anewa, toje wipé, eh, fun di kon, abi keji, wa li, darapoma, epade ileni. Pataki ju lo ni, awon iyon, toje pe, opumulero niwa. Eh, tu va, xi, ni tukupati timoni, asimato fati. Eh, idjoko yi, alediye, but eh, adukwe fun, awo lufokonse. Eh, toje pe, awon wala anewa, but, for some reason, wa li, tini, idjoko ileni. Mofe kafi, asiku yi, ki afi rochi bobongo, kwa kwa ta, kinsheni kon. Eh, bobongo, kwa kwa ta, karochi wa ni no, eh, adura. Edeka lo, ishedyu konkabwa adura fun bobongo. Eh, kwa kwa ta, eh, Mrs., eh, Akwata, te bamon, pe, awon wala, wa chepe, oki ni, better man. Anko, awon ni bishele ni, oleni, eh, ibisheni lati moni, lo, lole. But eh, bi wa she sipelwa, edeka rochi wa ni no, ami. Edje ki afi, ishedyu konmakpe, sister tinu, ki ewa bawa badura funwa. Eh, we she, era wono, mi, obo yusho lodo yi.
Usho.
Edjo, eh, sister tinu, briefly, ebawa lo wa, si point of contact to pray for. Everybody that's ever been part of the Directorate, make, nikabadura fun, only make a leave.
Heavenly Father, we just want to say thank you. Olua olon, olodumari. Awaswa june, niwa katewa yoluwa, dukbe lo wa inyoluwa, kekpe in tori, june tori, anu in du layla. Ankepe in funwa, join in yoluwa, eh, Directorate, tepe, to, um, kunsepe, wa pe, but, town hall meeting, o tepe 200, bigba, kontinshi yoluwa, adukwelo anye. Awanti, wa, sila re wa, ni se yi, ya la pe, ni tori pe, monte bakoda niyoluwa. Afy, onshu ba, fingbe oruko yi, adukpe, tori pe, inyolon, lodumari. Eshionre refunwa, awon no, what is, oni se yoluwa. Edje ki, bubu, ebino, ebawa to, ni no. Olon ra lakbara, fa wa, wa elo, ni no, toje wipé, awon ton sheshe, ni no, Directorate, i, toje pe, fun di kon tabiu, mira, wa li, sinbi leni, ni tori pe, wa ni losi bishe, ati pe, wa ni conflict, olu olon, lodumari. Kegbe, Mrs. Akwata, olon, mia Akwata. Eh, yongi di niwa, anbubu, konti, efisi, wa lokon, lua, niwa manshi, wa de manshi, tokon tokon. Ti wa bawa se epade, ati bubu, amrelu, mira, no, toye kimo lewa, ni bi ileni yoluwa. Olon, lodumari, afon swajuni yoluwa, ewakme lo wa, ogma to yi, ati mo, te funwa yoluwa, etunje kokonse yoluwa, ni oruko jesu, eh, shanofunwa. Bugu, ti wa, wojui fun yoluwa, edje kosheshi funwa, efifunwa. Bapa ju lo ti Yoruban Nation, ti bubu wa, badepota sen, wa fun, tan, jomitoru orofun. Te asoro, si te asin, sheshe fun yoluwa. Edje kosheshi, loju emi wa baba, mi mo ke asijiri, ni no, ile no yoluwa, ni oruko jesu, kristi. Olon, lodumari, lakbadura, ami.
Ashigong, sister tinu. Edjo, ema bino, mori pe, opolo wa, awon iyon wa. Ni, wa make contact, bashi sholo, lo, lo. Eh, someone suggested, pe, ah, she wa sabotejo ani. Eh, is very unusual, awon ikona wamawa, ni wa, send a message, me say. Wipé, awon wali, awon join, awon wali, join wa. So what I want to do is to try, king, will be, moshele. Moshele, dodowa, mofe ju link, me say, one ema bino, edjo.
Mama, edjo, sa, wunisena, se na, let's say, ure itwa.
Eh, go ahead.
Okay. Eh, wamawa, doctor, associate wa, biba, wale se ure itwa.
Ah, edjo, edjo, ben, edje kon, go ahead.
Doctor, associate. Hello.
Mongba iyo.
Eh, yani fa, isu ule, xu ule, 200.
Okay, ashio. Um, ipalo dumari o, ipa le, ipa bubu, oku mi, baba miya tiya, mi tewa nule. Ipakuwa, awa, babara wa, tolu ri shakubu, mo she, ipakuwa, awa ri shawa, duro bo, ati ya apere bo. Awanti wa, tele ayi, donkwele ayero, mo she ba, mo she ba, wa yami. Ifa wabani she, ki olodumari, ki wabani she, ki awanti wa sheli ayi, ki wa wa wabani she. Bugu wa, bi ashe duro, awa makosu ojiri, ta wanbi, tan, niyotu. Wipé ki ilewa, bodomi era, ki awanti wa fe ma fi, agbara, flati fi ma, te, flati fi ma, yo waje. An she ure leni, pe ki enyalale, ke tiwa leni, ke ro wa lakbara, bugu on, ati imo. Ati iše, toye kani, ati bugu onte kani lo, ke je kote wa lo, boku bi ashe yajoi. Bi, in, imo wa, bi o she jo, bi inkota fe, bi o she te wa lo, ki eh, je koto, ke je kote wa lo. Bugu on ti, ashe, ta fileki, boku wa, ti won bino, ilewa, tom bino ile, baba wa, ti won fe, jakama wa lo. Ti won fe bage, boku on, be she wa lakbara, boku wa wajoku, pata pata, ke, ke ro wa lakbara o. Kalé leke, kalé, jopalori ile, baba wa, toje ile tiwa, si ki awon ajoku bi, awon le, awon jakiti jakon. Pakakpata, ki wa marile wa ba o. Ki bubu, ajini be, bubu ko, ngonba le wa, ki bubu ekode, ke ro wa lakbara, ta fi fi, fi esewa ti le. Ke ni wako, ki wa, ke ro wa lakbara, kalé, se se ti lepe, ilewa, wa ni ba mo wa lo. Ki elewa kodi, aje monu wa, tebi tebi, te ro, te ro. Bugu imo, tabugu iše, ta wanše, ki oma wa jase pa go, ki bugu on ta wa ro, lokon, niro. Kote pe kalifile, wa si le fa wa, no motomo wa o. Ni, iwo yi, odumend logo 100 years. Kote wipé ilewa, titi wani, mo oriba, boku wa, anto fe fi eni ba, anto fe fi ogumba. Pakakpata, oni, ke bawa shego, ire, olan be re o. Obwe king koro mo le, komashé, adifa funwa li, olu, tinshomu, aborishari wa. Ole, ni re loko, loko, lintafasi, one yon, ni re loko, loko, orishani, komabo. Ki la wanbori wa, ilewa, orishala wanbori la, ilewa. Beni se jo, jo se, opatala, ire boku, si lewa, si le kotu ojiri bi, pata pata, olan ure, wipé kote wa lo. Ki awa ajuti, ki awa bino eni, ki awa joku bi, ki awo odale, komari ba lo wa o. Boku bashi wanše, pe ki lewa da, awa gonfrawa, ki irewa, kote wa lo o. Boku ta wa non, fojusu, ni kokon, ki irewa, kote wa lo, ki awa bino eni, komari ba. Bi ashe she tiwa, ala lewa, tan se tiwa, onbaba, na baba wa, ki awa la le, ki wa se titi wa o. Ki wa wako ba le o, ki re wako de, ki wa wako do, ka shego, kare rey ni odi. Elaboru, elabo ye, elabo sheshe.
Ashigong. Oh, ato. Ashigong.
Ashigong. Awedjo, akana bo, awa le ro. Edja, gusina, koko mi, erigiano, ni go le, umbe wari, mi biri, lo umbe wari. Ni bo lembewa ri, ni biri, lumbewa ri, ni biri.
Thank you very much, sir.
Ni biri lama adeu, lasedi.
Asher, asher dumari, asher. Ashigong mamawa, ashigong bubu awaba wati mama tonti badura. Lasiko i, eje ka tunora wa litiinkoko. Ti bubuwa non ba kui oxi pataki. Eh tuwogo le mashale ni bubu ba. Ni lebiwa, ni bi kibiti oma yoba, batiwa.
Lele ni yoma fe. Yoruba nesong. Lele ni yoma fe. Ajole ju, onile marele. Lele ni yoma fe. Ajole ju, poli dere mare wo. Lele ni yoma fe. Ki leni, ki banile ruwo. Lele ni yoma fe. Ile kokon, marita be. Ile tiyano. Lele ni yoma fe. Ata jawo, lama fisoya. Lele ni yoma fe. Omo yoruba, ile tiyano. Lele ni yoma fe. Asikoti to yoruba kare leo. Lele ni yoma fe. 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 Asiya o, yoruba nesong.
Lele ni yoma fe. Eh ashigong, thank you very much. Yorubani ilukiwa, lae dolori. Ola enke asikono de, asikono tu rada. Emabino yoruba baludi timosa. Eh asikono tu, si ama kui asiwajuwa. Ki wawafu wani oro. Shi, orishi ti, oro inyaju. Eh itali dimu, eh kale mate asiwaju. Eje kinpe omoba. Omoba tinufita woto, oru oru komo. Adiola, atairo, olamidjulo. Eh over to you.
Yes, ashigoni. Eh moki bubuwa kui akavo, eh eh muretu, dupe lo wawa. What can I say? All glory belongs to Elidumari. It will be an understatement to say our achievements in the past year are not a big deal. Of course, they are a big deal. And we dare not take God's grace for granted. We are elated. The trust you repose on in us over the last few years has been our inspiration. And the energy that has kept us marching forward in our service to our dear Yoruba nation. We thank you so much. And pray that Olodumari will bless you abundantly. Today is a very special day in the lives of the Yoruba Nation Global Directorate. And it allows us to appreciate those wars relentless effort have significantly and positively impact the Yoruba liberation struggle. There will be messages from different speakers today. And with that in mind, I wouldn't want to waste our precious time. Kindly indulge me to declare the celebration open. As I thank you for joining us on this special occasion. Odudu wa agbe wa o, konidi amwo odale. Emia diola, atairo, lamidjulo, konida le Yoruba o, iwonko. Ashigoni, over to you.
Mila oni dalio. Ejo, eje kubuwa down question, emiala ta yogiri, me ni dalay Yoruba o.
Emi baneto, fala ole no ni dalay Yoruba o. Emi rafel adibayo, me ni dalay Yoruba o.
Emi tinua de oma ja o, ayakshala, me ni dalay Yoruba o, orukojis.
Emi bi yo yefule, me ni dalay Yoruba o.
Elidumari shion. Eh ti.
Yeah, me.
Jeta, olodumari. Oni dalay Yoruba o. Ya sorry, ah let's join.
Let me see talent.
Emi atwa yomi, olon shogo, ayafolapi, emi oni dalay Yoruba o.
Asher, asher, asher. Eh olon.
Emi konla, afolabi etifa, afolabi yonida le Yoruba o.
Asher, asher. Eh olu ashe, olu ashe, one olale valeku, ebale palu yoku.
Dumari.
Balelo.
Eniba dalay Yoruba.
Balelo.
Balelo. Wali dalay lumio, botavati dalay Yoruba. Niwa leru atinise. Ki awa alale Yoruba koba visitwa. Eje kinwa kui baba wa, trinoni eh ibita waleni.
Wujia muti miyawa, ni kipomi ose muti.
Ejo, moti ba imi utesa. Eje kinpe baba wa Rafael. Timo liba bokubo ya wotipala si post on country. Awomodona trump. Eh ejo baba, itu shuno. Ebawa si itu shuno. Ebwa yepi Nigeria lewa. Abuklawa belu inyon. Eh juli joti.
Amin. Ah. Over to you. Nigeria, Nigeria anbu wa o.
Okay.
Nigeria, Nigeria, Nigeria anbu. Awasheta ashi. Ta ashi ati re, ati re etoreo. Kamaduro, nikota anshi.
Okay.
Eh so mo morning. Batimodon, omotif sanibuwa, wa kimlo tell me. Mude bat, mude basande non soro. So, enekentwa dalay Yoruba, bale lonio. Bashemoshlan shey, suba dilele ri. Bonta asipawata. Lo ah, shalashio. We as in this meeting, bayi. In konla niyo. Soweku buapawata kui akurireo. Akurekwe ati edulu, ne asko i, fu le Yoruba. Adulu, debi omokon, eh je kingo koko distra tuwa. Eh je ki awa timo, ni bitu onlo. Tuon dono waru. Tuwa deba, amobitu onlo, tuwa deba. Oni mo. Iditi manyuwa confused, nipuwa loko, obitu onlo. Suba amobita onlo. That is where we are focused. And the move ekubuapawata, kui akurire. Baton fi wuswa niwo, nipakuka, ashigidigon. Bakpadula waton falu, eh automatic deposit from their paper. Eh blue week, ashie adukaloi. Anton falu, to Zeli. Alakonkwa, ife dalukonwa. Wong kinseni time. Makasaru eshani. Ton du sibet. Ashie aduke. Ah de dupe fun awo, eh awo sekretiwa. They are worthy, they are wonderful people. When there is no time for expenditure, there is no request. I, I am very privileged to be one that eh is overlooking the account. And I'm proud to say that because there is no, eh there is no litigation. There is nothing that anybody can eh can call for any kind of fraud, mispending or mismanagement. Thank you so much. One wanti, one that, one monitor sekretiwa. Follow nepal leni yo. Bubu time tenlu, ladi shele i. Time you know, olon walo, oniri. Fu ye i, ati le i, oma jeruko fu ye. Ni oruko lon olodumari, she. So let me, eje ki adawo. Tabani askoti, anenowo. Asko iniyo. Tope, no do i, Directorate. Ama decide, kini konmita fe she. Kini mita fe she. Tia je kamu yuwa mokwi. Awakonwa, nele ukiri. Tia mokwi, ilewala groove. Wa fe she. We know we are trustworthy, who can trust us? Because people have trusted us before. Within motorcycles, within seconds, people have begin their checks. Zeli was coming in to do what we want to do. So people that own pension, they go ahead and give. So this one is impressive to everybody. I know as a pastor, that when you don't do what is right, who can vote against you with their pockets? They can come to your church and say, oh pastor, we like you. But they will refuse to give you money because they don't, they don't trust you. They don't trust where you spend their money. At Yoruba Global Directorate, we are both bored. So mofe kuguala ni asko i, ejo. Eje ka fu si, inoakoo, global directorate. Osi, ikose yeto, tokereo. Oleti topo. Eje ka fu sibet. Eje ka fu sibet. Pasen fu sibet. Bi oti mo, inoguma mo. When we have enough money, we go to plan big project. And that, and such such big projects are needed at this time in Yoruba nation. Tope no fukun, du yamo yamo. Ashie aduke, ejo. Eje ka fu sibet. Ololodumari, aron wa lo, ati wale. Owa oni kaisale aku. Ah, deni ju niye ye, lau, niya wujo, koloko inyon. Ro ama dutiwa. Ulilaje, oni ju ru. Be lucijelini. Eh emi ya postrafe adibayo. Fun ebe, Yoruba National Global Directorate. Which I'm proudly to be a member, I'm proud to be serving. I can sit anywhere because this is most credible group of people. I had a meeting Lagos with some group. I wanted to tell them, we there is a meeting, one of our Yoruba leaders was celebrating seventy-five birthday. Leku, matadibe, lot of elderly people, nesaleku. And I had time to tell them about Yoruba nation, who were we. And they are very impressed. They are very impressed. They wish to meet, they wish to be part of us. Because they never knew something is still going on. Asho, olon mama dutiwa. Eh eje ka fi our Zella account, per account, so the chat box you are, kiali give. Olua map, ama polaua, ashe.
Thank you very much. Eh daddy, ejo bami te zel, yes even. Eh sorry, coni, ashie. Thank you and um. Eh zoom user, ejo talulu zoom user. Me o boyya oluye, ship sandi bo, ti wali. Olawa ni e pot, somba wali, tell anybody vast porto, eje kim, minama make contact. Eh lifei otapolo polo pa ejo. We believe kwaya in commit ali fi otapolo polo. Si ali fi pa, owa. Yeni peki ama eh what do you call it, ah rojo, ah ah limuru soloku. So one ni estish, anytime, since the nine. So walu, basi she, titi debita wa i. Eje kakoko bo orishi ti. Tia koko. Eh one udukisha imo, fun logo. Eh nitama ni, toje pe ani ori ofe. To reflect eh awo isho ile yolo ba. Olomo, onimo, omaluabi. Totu wani experience ipe omua weyya. Tumba wa fa, lo wo. So ori ofela anileni. Upe doctor Aliu, otherwise known as Baba Aliu. Mawala anewa. Eje kinpe on, koko koba show, oro. Eh si akokoma bole, orishi ti. Akokoma bole ni, over to you, doctor Aliu, over to you, sir.
Toh, akoko, moki. Olon, Elidumari. Obato daeda, obato dan to mi, ora do dan to mi. Obana, oboni, obola, obodujuma. Obata epo onani olukapa, doli onbobo, ama dupalo ore. Pe ofu wani, omo si fu wani, agbara. Otuwa da wani yoruba. Otuwa fuwasi ulile to da. Ozi tuwa si wani eh ya omaluabi, aduke lo we. Ota fe asko i, ki awa baba wa, te yawati yewa lori kalé. Bugu ina moki o, tori asiku. Otoa kuba, onto tuwa bo, ni lelo ku, bugu ina moki o. Olon obadua wa o. Olon ndoduti wa o. Odua be wa o. Ibita anfe, ta onu. To wa lokan, peka de, olon dadebe, kosi ndoduti wa, asion. Now, ni tori eh asiku. Oni pe ni rampa. Buguana latimbo, bubuana latiman. Idito fato vidaye pe ni, idaduro i gagan. Ninto da, ninto kawale, ninto buyukuni. Oda gegebi. Eh ni ti, wanfu ankopu sini awo atese. Toan de moduka, omio. Deboko mi, omi. Suba, koraya nata, awo yoman. Ore, olai, tolon se fuwa, koran. Koran dadi, ono fin pe ni ogua du lao. Ogua du, ogu adu lao i. Bugu ema pe, eya tonje, eya yuba, eya patakiné. Suba tolon se fuwa, koran sita. Latara pe ibita wa. Latara pe awo eyya. Tuon majua papo, nitifati kuku, tanku lawani country loni. Odeki o, koloko, odeki oguwa yo. Moa wu population wa, basi poto. Ni nou wekati mosi. Moan compia population wa, sa wu population kuwete. Moan compia population Yoruba. Si population Saudi. Moan compia population Yoruba. Si population Qatar. Moan compia population Yoruba. Si population Ghana, togo ati bebe lo. Ipe ni, mba tabali, awa country kan. Tope bubuku poma gamu towa. Awata wa po, tolon fu anima. Olon tuwa se pe ni, ideka na lanso. The same culture, the same tradition, the same norms and values. Suba ogoyo dadi. Ni niye, kapalo profiti de, la wontoni ni ima djelé. Tonti uludine pe no, kuyakoma lobé. Olon gato da wa, toje obadada. Oda wa pe ni, dada. Ipe kadwa wambika, osi ellasi, kantole bota. Tuofi, tufo soya. Ika, owa ni nou we mi mo. Ipe, eh ipe luwaya ba, ajoda i pa konyo, osi. Oselessina to deso, yala ellasi muslimini, yala ellasi kristenini. Yala ellasi ya balayini, tuosofuwa pe ni rara, o o oda pa konyo rara. Odo wa sori le, lototo. Ofi de si wale no, lototo. Ofu wani koto, lototo, tuo dorawan. Suba wa monesi, monu agbara wa. Mo si fosi wa papo, awa waludukan. Owa si no la no. We, bubu basen palioto. Ipe ni koi awo inyawa. Bugu basen biye duto. Ki awo inyawa o sodi. Edakun. Ba unyu, baseli. Gegebi Saudi Arabia se je, tuon soi de wong. Wankawe le de wong, wanshe bubu kane de wong. Ba unyu, baseli. Gegebi Japan. Ton soi de wong, ki yoba namasoi detitiye. Geography le de yoba. Chemistry le de yoba. V six le de yoba. Biology le de yoba, ati bebe lo, edakun ba unyu siri. Le i facti ne. Pe ah bubuwa wanyanstushianswa, ati primary, ati secondary, si bebe lo, serini Japan. Mba ti ti Japan se wu, kilo de titi wofu wayato. Ni batanwa, weti, tope edenuan, soni lu, edemo no fin kawa, fin se. Kilowade, titi wafi wayato. Kilowade, tuwai yo. Emesem paliwo, niboba ba, monpaliwo. Ipe ni, awa tangda fu, o minerai, atoka, akere gidiga. Akere gidiga, loto. Bugu to adian katioda, bio se kokoli niye, afesio ri serisi obstacles. Ton selé. Because, aran we yagi, awo yapataki. Tuon du de de, nori yado i. Watimu wabu, wati se pe ni wong. Aran wa balaba, wati fu wale pe, epu buluku. Awami fi binu ga, wazapoto wo. Ah, omi fi binu ga, wa za po to go, o ti, oh, 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 fasai. Ni tori wa ti, ah, we ya wa, ipe, angbi, eh, ju kado iya, ah, we ya wa, olopo ni, understand in taso. Koiyo, olopo, elasi muslimi, koiyo, olopo, elasi christani, ba kanan, si ni koiyo, olopo, ah, we elasi ambalai, koiyo wa. Because so ba ye wa ni, kilo de, te ba uwa, ah, wa, ah, wa koli wa. Melo ni nuwa, te li to, ya sin tasi. Oh, ya sina, so, oni tu du, oni tu du, ya si wa ni, abi, oni Fuji, one si, pullu crowd. One pullu crowd, abi ala pala, bobo wa, oh, no, i, one pullu crowd, aban, oni, duran wa, Davido, nde ya, eh, ya, konya siwa, ah, whiskeyd. Bobo, anta pullu crowd in millions, nde wa ya siwa, oh, ma ya siwa. Aban, oni tiata ni, melo ni na, oni tiata, te li to ya sin ta, bedani, di si mi mo si, ba in solo, oh, ya siwa. Bobo wa, to lo ko, to lo ko, ni na, oni o shiri, eh, ni li kan, to, beno lo ya siwa ni, abi, uh, abi, ah, one, come, codiri. Abi o gogo, melo ni nuwa, te li to ya siwa, oh, ya siwa. Even, oh, bo wa, 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 eh, le bru, ba ta, da lo ko ta, da ko bobo wa, melo ni nuwa, nuwa, wa, du, de de, to ya si ni ya jo i. Me, to ri to ya si ni ya jo i. To ri pe ke ni, hm, ti o, olopo, ongo, ni pe, the been ta, je, to ba ti, lo ti ta, to long, to long, olopo, ongo ni. Eh, wa uwa, ah, we, be lori se ri si. To, na, biye ju, ge bi Directorate, atangwe, be me, na, to biye ju, loli bio se da. Loli peni, kaku, lo kero, nde mo le, lai lati, she has cream. So, ba posibu, so ba posibu, si problem. Hello.
Mark, et tu, et tu, what you have, I'm going.
Okay, okay, to, hm, timo, mo fe, she has cream, telling, I'm no problem, mama, no to, and what you be, baby. Okay, hm, don't sell any penny. You, you, you welcome be, Timo Po, Papa.
Baba Aliu, eh, the she, eh, the she has cream, eh, she, eh, she.
Oh, um, okay. Um. Nja, eli, oh, do you scream, you like?
Uh, I read, but continue show, cause I very show, I, I, I just listen.
Okay. Hey, Timo call, Yoruba sovereignty, the future of prosperity and progress, more what I move, probably ask you. Now. So, I didn't know where he. Ah, one, a silly to two opo. More dedicated, peni to the entire Yoruba risk worldwide. Who's risk, heritage, resilience and cultural legacy inspire us to strive for a brighter future. May this work serve as a testament to our shared history and a call for unity and progress. Ni no way he, ah, one kakambe, to de, oh, ya leno, ki di, fu, omo Yoruba. Let me to ba, jo, omo Yoruba, Tata, to jo, omo Yoruba, gi di, tu, eh, battle, oh, wa, to ba uwa. Most especially, ilwa, one, to wa ni, um, university, ah, one polytechnics, to the mobile, ah, one people, you know, oh, ya siwa. It will be chapter five, the limit jump, chapter one to four, economic contribution of Yoruba nation. What be, Latin nineteen sixty-one, our income tax, the late, moving, my baby, in contacts, ne. Latin nineteen sixty-one, iya, o, se se bere, latiman, je wa, ira di, o, se se bere, siwa, otipet, as you, I'm medicine. Ni na, we income taxi, ni nineteen sixty-one, eh, yeah, wo, income tax, ni be, ni not, eh, southeastern, eh. That's openi, four thousand two hundred forty-eight pounds, eh, eh, the entire east. Our southeast, that's in sunny bay, eh, ni eastern region, ati ko cross river ma u, ako cross river ma, ako potakotima. Bobo, ah, one to wa, ni southeastern, eh, ako one pa po. Even, tema, wa, ah, wa, ah, wa, ibon, bobo wa, be, eh, wo, income tax, one in nineteen sixty-one, four thousand two hundred forty-eight pounds, ni bay, eh. Eh, yeah, wa, losi, the northern region. Ni, northern region, so you, atika, kogi ma u, atika, kara ma u, atika, gumbi ma u, atika, benui ma u. Atika, Kaduna, Kasina, Kanu, Digawa, Barono, Yobe, Kebi. Nineteen northern state, oh, bobo la, kapako, eh, want to de, one thousand four hundred and fourteen pounds. That was nineteen sixty-one, income tax, ti kaluku generate, loto, ra ra ra, eh, wa, western region. Eh, we, eh, me si, ni, no, to ma, base, only percentage, ela hi, twenty-seven percent, eh, ba, one, eastern region. The northern region, nine percent, western region, la, one, oh, yo, ogun, oh, so, Lagos, undo, ekiti. That was thirty, me, fine, eh, sixty-seven point seven percent, lo de, sixty-seven, sixty-three point seven percent. Midway, that was in nineteen sixty-one. Kadumpu, eh, eh, wa, wo, total regional revenue, total regional revenue, six thousand four hundred eighty pounds. Ela, three thousand, now around sixty-one pounds, ah, one, not in here, eh, wa, uto, do tiwa, be, fourteen thousand, seven hundred forty-two pounds. Ni regional revenue, eh, wa, would be allocation, ibita, no, again, la, pe, ju, eh, wa, allocation be. Um, ba to do, allocation, that is, answer, on pa, federal allocation, you. Um, ba ta, bobo ba, da jo, ati bobo, oto, li lo da wa, ah, ah, si, oh, ti, region, oh, oh, to, a ti, fair argument, to uni, bobo region, to a, pa, to, on fe, she are eh. Eh, wa, uto, do, one be, ti ta, da, one, oh, ma, ju, kutama, momeni, that wa, ibo, ten thousand four hundred eighty-eight pounds, no, fo. Eh, what in northern region be, fifteen thousand forty-seven pounds, eh, you know, we see. Fifteen thousand, eh, wa, wo, doti one be, seven thousand eight hundred sixty-six pounds, say goodbye. Bo kan, fi ela hi, tori asiko, eh, dien ku, ni bobo, be, eh, ah, wa, ka, bobo wa, la i, eh, bobo wa, kene, eh, musi, brid, eh, recipe. So, to ba ti, di pe, afembo, so, on pa, pe, federal allocation, federal allocation, eh, wa, li, peni, ah, we, jan, jan, o, kuli wa loo. For nineteen sixty-one, aso, as you, one in twenty, twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four, twenty, twenty-five, by, ba kanan, eh, otu, brudai, si ne. Bobo, mo, jump, bobo, ah, kene, ni, bobo, ah, la i, eh, bo, kene, lo, one be, eh, dek, in, to, lo, sa, will be twenty, 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 something, test, my, pe, can see wa. To, mo, me si, ni, ba, bo, peni, ta, ba ti, so, ne pa, ah, one, to di, omo we. You, ah, one, to wa, ni, university, eh, tu, un kaba, iban, te, one, loo, to one ka, to one si, li, ah, one, sausage, si, uli, si, si, bita, ti, get it, to long ba, to iye, oh, to, bambe, be. Ah, one, oh, tagi, ah, one, oh, ro nu, ipe, ah, oh, ma, da, be, eh, in, to, man, so, eh, um, to, make it sense, eh, eh, we, we see, ah, one, top ten, eh. Top ten, ni Nigeria, ni na, one, turn, generate, you, wo, to de, top ten, so, ba, one, ah, one, ten, eh, you, you see. Eh, le li, ah, oh, ma, ju, kutama, momeni, be. Ni pa pe, I G R, ah, one, turn, generate, you, Lagos, eight hundred and fifteen billion. F C T, federal capital, two hundred and eleven billion, reverse, one hundred and ninety-five billion, ogun, one hundred and forty-six billion era. Eh, le li, anabra, be, eh, le li, eh, no gumbi, eh, le li, eh, boyimbe, eh, le li, abi, ambe, eh, le li, imo, be. Hello, Jack, in National Bureau of Statistics, twenty twenty-three, National Bureau of Statistics, twenty twenty-three, top ten, oh, si ni, we. Di si, ma, we, ya, eh, you, na, you, mo, so, pe, ah, one, ah, one, develop, ah, one, ah, one, develop, ah, one, ah, one, develop. Eh, wa, eh, wa, kara, eh, wa, kara, fifty-nine point six billion, ni, internally generated revenue, ah, one, top ten, like, be, daddy. Ni na, one, outokyo, ya, state, maybe, na, eh, kara, and Kaduna, ota, ati F C T, kara, Kaduna, F C T, eh, you, eh, you. Um, to fill, eh, moru, kara, turn, generate, fifty-nine points, six four billion. Oh, yo, no, one be, fifty-two point seven five billion, say, epa, ati li, oh, yo. Ati li, ogun, ati le, kuli be, si, be, si, be, eh, no, kara, ta, so, you, na, you see, ni no, sixteen local government, to, ah, kara, you, balo, ni, twelve local government. So, ah, one, analysis, si, eh, la, si, si, be, no, one, do, ba, one be, ah, one be, one be, be. But, ah, I come, but, mo fe, to mo fe, fi, eh, eh, tori asiko, to de, um, kato, oh, 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 yeah, me, eh, no. Oh, si, Jack, him, feel somehow, eh, will be, you see, him, up to long, ba, ne, ke, eh, le, eh, le, more, ah, display, be, southeast zone, twenty twenty-three, I G R, versus, ogun state.
Great, well, okay, yeah, well, okay.
Say, eh, 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 we, 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 we see, moa wo, I G R, oh, ogun state, ta, peni, one hundred forty-six billion, eight hundred eighty-eight million. Moa, mo, wo, to, go, eh, mo, go, go, side, beka, one forty-six billion, oni, mo draw, mo, be, wa, sisale, be. Moa, lot, wo, abia, twenty-three. Mo, lo, ah, number, thirty-three, eh, wa, eh, boi, thirty, eh, no, go, thirty-three, emo, fifty-two. So, ba, ta, eh, ba, ba, be, number, ta, so, oh, I G R, city, kara state. Kara state with sixteen local government, five, six billion era, fifty-six billion era, la, pe, eh, eh, wa, wo, ti, eh, no, go, eh, plus, it, eh, no, go, eh, eh, wa, thirty-three, ta, ba, plus, thirty-three million, you see. Oh, ma, fo, ni, fifty-four billion, state, maybe, eh, no, go, new, thirty-three. Emo, new, twenty-one. Ta, pro, the ba, plus, if we, major, di, pa po, oh, ma, fo, ni, fifty-four billion, state, maybe, kara, fifty-six. Oh, by, oh, ba, oh, ba, riro, pekili, seli, something is wrong, something is fishy. Two states, two states from southeast. Bobo wa, la i, oh, one, bobo wa, la i, eh, lo, ah, be. Eh, 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 wa, wo, eh, ta, so, ni, be, number, ta, mo, state, ma, ah, be, ah, anabra, eh, boi, ati, eh, no, go, ati, emo, ta, so, pe, one forty-two billion. Ni, we, la, eh, oh, du, kan, la, ti, January, si, December, state, ma, la, for, as a question, oh, di, di, state, ma. Ah, one, compia, eh, pa Lu, hm, ti, ah, wo, ogun, state, i, generate, I G R, internally generated revenue, one forty-six billion, eight hundred eighty-eight, something is fishy. Nga, can, seli. Bobo, run, eh, kamafit, kara, we, ya, wa, di no, nobody should talk nonsense, eh, we develop, Lego, we develop, keep quiet, develop, we. I G R, internally generated revenue, according to National Bureau of Statistics report, twenty twenty-three, oh, ah, be, panyo, panyo, clearly. Analysis, eh, lo, we, la, daddy. Eh, oh, go, ni, one forty-six billion, southeast state, me, oh, ta, cost, technical, bobo state, you, pa, pa, ta, to, ah, the southeast. Bobo, bitoti, eh, ki, oh, pola, ah, we, ya, wa, tima, tadini, eh. Pe, kilo, seli, otu, ma, si, pe, ah, wa, la, syntaxi. Otu, ma, si, pe, ah, wa, la, be, ro, joba, otu, ma, si, pe, ah, wa, la, fe, ilo, si, wa, ju, otu, ma, si, pe, ah, wa, la, wa, oh, pa, eh, to, ah, new, eh, to, eh, da, cast, eh, to, eh, da, cast, eh, to. What is happening? Five states, five governments, and all of them are receiving allocation from the federal government, kilo, seli. Ah, wa, wa, la i, oh, ah, be, no, si, si, mo, mo, to, ah, sing, ka, ka. Money, eh, loni, oh, yo, eh, ni, fini, twenty twenty-three, eh. Fifty-two point seven five billion, oh, no, allocate, to long, ba, ne, ke, eh, be, oh, yo, mobe, da, de, be, generally, hello.
Ari, Ari, oh, yo, fifty-two point seven five.
Top billion, oh, yo, mo, be, da, de, you, eh, wa, ma, ta, be, oh, yo, da, de, be. Ta, so, twenty fifty-two point seven billion, kara, ni, fifty-nine point six four billion, January to December, according to National Bureau of Statistics report, twenty twenty-three. Moa, lo mu, abia, twenty-three billion, momu, emo, moa, add, eh, pa po, media, di, lo, fu, ah, ni, forty-four billion, state, maybe, kodule, be, oh, yo, fifty-two. State, maybe, ni, southeast, kodule, be, kara, something is fishy. Ela hi, so, on pa, pe, allocation, to, a lot of government, you, no. Answer, on ne pa, oh, wo, oh, li, ti kaluku, ba, lot, ni, state, eh, eh, la, so. Analysis and interpretation, comparison overview, ba wa, la i, eh, lo, ah, be, ba wa, la i, eh, lo, ah, be. Eh, dek, one, law, eh, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-two, basi, to, long, oh, twenty twenty-two, eh, mo, si, to, state by state, oh, mo, si, consider, eh, sa, le, peni, source. National Bureau of Statistics report, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty twenty-two, eh, bobo, eh, na, last, eh, analysis, eh, back, eh, na, ta, ba ti, wo, ah, one, top ten, eh, ma, li, one, be, na, eh. Ah, one, state, eh, te, eh, le, na, let, ma, li, you, ah, one, kara, eh, le, ma, li, you, Lagos, le, ma, li, you, oh, go, le, ma, li, you, oh, yo, le, ma, li. Eh, le, ri, southeast, eh, be. Eh, le, ri, eh, no, la, san, eh, no, la, san, nothing. Well, that, um, be, da, de, be, oh, yo, ni, eh, we, eh, you see, southwest internet, uh, generated revenue, twenty twenty-two, oh, la, to, si, be, this, eh, ka, eh, la, you, ba. Ba wa, la i, eh, ni, be, moa, compia, ni, mo, compia, eh, li, eh, te, eh, eh, will be, to, mo, ti, compia, ah, ah, one, south, eh, eh, ah, wa, wa, ibon, by, eh, sa, cross river, delta, eh, do, ati bebe, lo, tori asiko. Eh, dek, in, wa, losi, be, ka, in, to, ah, closing, ah, we, eh, mo, fe, fi, ah, one, kakam, eh, eh, me, si, ti, mo, fe, ki. Come, yeah, oh, ro, musi. Oh, ni, mo, fe, losi, be, P S U N, P I, ati, road taxes.
Because I want to come back. And we will talk about money, pathways to independence, insight from successful and failed referendum. We are here, I want to start journey. If I want to turn it around, you know, you know, you know. But we want to see, I want to come here, I need to do it. When the referendum was failed, we were full of kilo fat. And when they want to, we don't care. Bobo, you told me you don't want to. Now, I'm pretty. Kilo fat, to fill the debt pay. Ah, I don't want to say the referendum, or say what, let me tell you. I want to see better, I want to see the referendum. Never thought the referendum, I succeed. On our own way back, back, we want to see, to figure out what succeed. To be a fellow. On our own way back, Bobo, I want to go to a car. Bobo, I want to go to see, Bobo, I want to discover, I need to. A majority, I want to say, not a awareness, or no code. Motto, I like to tell you, I want to see the referendum. Now, I don't conduct the referendum, I succeed. Now, I succeed, I want to para one, I want to. Kilo fat, oh, I'm there. To be, I want to see, I want to come, we are 40, I want to see. So, I want to put it up, I want to, I want to, I want to. They pay, I want to, I want to, I want to, I want to. I want to come, but I have to go, so. You need to move away, you need to go to LA. More, I want to see South Sudan, Monica, study one. Successful Independence Referendum, case study one, South Sudan twenty eleven. Bobo, I want to, I want to, kilo two, never think South Sudan, don't fail. I want to para one, I want to, I want to para one, I want to. I want to get it, now, I want to, I want to, I want to. I need to get it, I need to get it, I need to, I need to, I want to. I want to, I want to. To follow you, my, 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 my politician, what you.
We have today. Though they are not here physically, the impact they made is still felt. And we hold their efforts and memories with great appreciation. Let's look at those that have passed away. We want to take a moment to honor those people who are no longer with us in this life. But whose legacy lives on. Doctor barrister Janet Fashaki. Councillor Oni. Adogom. Alaji, who passed away in Oloey's house. And many more people in Yoruba land who have passed away. Before their time. We want to remember them. We want to remember their love, their dedication, and spirit will continue to inspire all of us. And remind us of the importance of cherishing each other. May we carry their memory in our hearts, keeping alive the values and lessons they shared with us. And finally, to everyone gathered here today, thank you for coming. Your presence adds to the sense of togetherness that we cherish so deeply. Whether you've been here for years or are joining us for the first time, you are part of what makes this occasion so special. Together, we celebrate the past, together, we celebrate the present. And together, absolutely hundred percent, we will celebrate the future of this incredible community of Yoruba people. And together, we will fly the flag of Yoruba land in no time, in our time. Thank you for being here and for being you. Ashigoni, thank you.
Thank you very much. If I'll only. Missa Kondemusati presents, God bless you. Thank you very much. Ati mommy, oh mommy, God bless you. We thank you for your prayers. Gifts and all that. Asher, Asher. Ca- can't think in yesi.
I can't number Latin ma for usi. And Mister Cola for lobby.
Okay, eh, office is a. Okay, thank you very much. Doctor Olopolo. Come and join me, sing hallelujah.
Am I showing you?
God bless you. This is different.
Yes. Ashigoni, thank you very much. Ashigoni, uh, Moki, everybody. Uh, Madame Princess, uh, Director of the Directorate, Moki. And let me thank. Um, Sister Amir. Madame Popola for. Or resonates by Lou General Thinking Me. Most of all, Baba Ali U. That wonderful Yoruba intellectual. Or presentation. It's a must have for most of us. It's a real must have. Musare she meta analysis. Baba Lee U, um, data. She money pay. From many sources. If you play the call, not to the pay at him more late. The white berry. For the twenty thirty minutes. One glaring fact local pop out. Data me was from public domain. Key sheet data from the Nigerian, uh, data bureau. Public domain. Lying and giving us false information. All over the internet. Be Baba Lee U T meticulously. Believe you me, data actually me. So from the political state, the US GDP. Followed by river state. Work site. Followed by Aqua Ebum. Followed by emo states. So somebody obviously has been putting. Uh, misinformation out on the web. But, uh, data Baba Baba Ali is far more credible. To boy government, uh, um, sources. Outside of the government, but their data doesn't make any sense. So once you go on the internet. If I, if you search very deep on the internet, you are going to find wrong data. So Lara education. So, um, as soon as see with Baba Lee U Badja Day, it's a must have book. And based on the, uh, data. I have to cancel everything with me here. Could make sense, the material during the work. Can you make sense now? But Baba Lee U really confirmed it. Actually, Baba Lee U. Whatever, uh, strength, they need to write all those things. May God Almighty multiply that strength for you, uh, for you. Now, my own speech, Lenny, which I said I'm going to modify some of the data. If I meet you, they make it as data rich as I wanted to make it. Uh, socio-economic aspects. Which is sustainability. To be more sustainable. Our social scientists. Economic sustainability. Obadoni, environmental sustainability. Obadoni, social sustainability. Obadoni, political sustainability. Obadoni, cultural sustainability. Obadoni, technological sustainability. See our social scientists. And this is a Yoba will include. Our non lowest GDP Nigeria, number thirty five, not if you want see. Number thirty five. No, no, number thirty five, which as Baba Baba Lee's presentation, you run on. So share your by land in the sustainability town fair. My answer is a category categorical, yes, and yes, and yes. From my own data, and again, uh, I, I, I must revise it, but she support a deer. Even though could support a be other, uh, credible figures. All software I pay eco need ten point eight percent of the entire Nigerian GDP. What is software I pay Yoruba states? Only thirty, uh, twenty three point seven percent of the entire Nigerian GDP. But then ninety one billion, Cheko produce. Mexico, the eighth largest economy in Africa. Lagos by itself produces only GM, uh, G, uh, GDP. Gross domestic product of ninety one billion US dollars. Making it the eighth largest in the entire Africa. A critical is, is, is surpassed by only seven countries. South Africa. Egypt. Algeria, Morocco, Kenya, Ethiopia. So we need to fully understand this. Now, the next question is. Much is so, yes, I've, I've answered, yes. Is leg, is Yoruba land sustainable? Absolutely. Can Yoruba land stay on its own? Yes. Our Otawa, both east of the Niger, also north of the Niger. On my party on the internet. Tachia falsehood. A raw, open, open face line. Now, can one make was sustainable?
Hello, sir.
Hello.
Only this data has shattered almost everything we thought we knew about wealth generation in Nigeria. What the six geopolitical zones contributed to the value add that has pulled and received in twenty twenty four. Southwest contributed three point one trillion. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty six in January. Not do job, because federal government long bar value add that is on behalf of the state. I worry statistic, there could be southeast. Of course, also when the southeast contributed one hundred and one billion. Three hundred and forty one billionaire.
Actually, Baba Lee U. So, um, our sustainable. Now, can you make us work any? Any ecological knowledge, uh, traditional econo- uh, ecological knowledge. Uh, certain forests. Even though, um, religious connotation like Billy Lowly. Without us intending to do it by your diversity. They are still there. So you know, yeah, last song, because of our trad- our tendency to be traditional. I will, you might help one that is sustain, uh, some ecological diversity. I won't be sustainable agriculture. Love as she make was sustainable. Our health. Education, for instance. Time of free primary education, I'm advantage. So. I'm more, I need history. We, uh, uh, I'mma continue with it, making education free. Hopefully, primary education, hopefully secondary education and some form of tertiary education. But education for self reliance. Was stopping the agricultural list. Need how to do sustainable agriculture. So, uh, hopefully. These fake, fake hierarchy, I mean, I better pass my neighbor. We have to do with it. Sign of emotional immaturity, primitivity, me. You are not better than anybody. You are better than other people. Who in hell are you? So. To re, re, redesign our value, redesign our. So you know, I'm got a machine here, I want, uh, health services. I think it was in the sixties or maybe even in the seventies. Tioba Saudi Arabia was University of Ibadaw for healthcare needs. Resuscitate all over the world Nigerian doctors. So we have the ability to excel. And tabadi ni environment to, uh, to. Enable that excellence, we will see miracles occurring to us. Much is only ecological, um, sustainability. Be environmental sustainability. We are sustainable. Uh, Lara, economic sustainability. For instance. Any cocoa, any palm oil, any rubber, any gold, any iron ore. Any limestone, for cement making, any beauty man. Create, turn, turn build, we all know how, how unreliable, non durable those lands are. I did beautiful men. Beautiful men, not if man she or not, not if she black to her or no, among other things. And our, our, our new, our new largest deposit of beautiful men in the entire Africa. And our beautiful men is the second largest in the world. Of course, I'm okay. Local council government, uh, state government, no man by every, every month, every year, no man's allocation. And it pay, Thomas, she budget water, all of a sudden, two, three, four, uh, SUV. Only two hundred thousand Naira per month. I mean, only it takes a fool. Uh, anything between for the past six, seven, ten years, suddenly become local council chairman. Some, uh, suddenly. All within a few months. And of course. Is to be able to block those type of thievery. So this is a type of thing. You see, um. Uh, tha- that is that. Say, South Africa. See, um, I think I did Egypt. The motor chose Namibia, would be a very small country. We are so far behind all those people in GDP growth, uh, domestic production. So we can easily, uh. Out of Nigeria. You will see the percentage, uh, um, percentage. Is going to take us away from where Nigeria is and put us close to the top. Me, if you go here now, but I, I'm just bet you, you take those seven states. Uh, seven states being. States here, you see that we are. Not only will we be susta- uh, will our economy and our social, uh, social. Life be sustainable, I'm our much better than a whole lot of, 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 a whole lot of countries in, even in Africa. Oh, my make me not present it. You see, uh, wouldn't make any sense, I'm fully convinced. Uh, I might be know rubbish data. So I'm not going to, uh, really say much about it. So in summary. Ladies and gentlemen, Yoruba land is sustainable. The sustainability of Yoruba land. Is firmly, is strongly and loudly affirmed.
Very much, uh, Doctor. Uh, we appreciate you, uh. Uh, we're going to have an open mic session, uh, so that our people will be able to interact. So please, you can put on your, put on your microphone. And anybody have any question. Either Baba Lee U. I don't know whether. Like when you call international call. If not, I'm sure pray another time. Uh, he will be here. But. We both are there. Thing about making impact. As a point of breakthrough. Thing about making impact, of funny eh, as a point of breakthrough. Oh, oh, possible, eh, eh, we should go there. Clear, Maro eh, ah, you're cuckoo, jamon, oh, 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 anything, but, once in time, eh, kwa lu physical activities. Now we pray, anybody, to my eh, experience in labor, boyah, they can be professional. Or, or call, I be, I be thirty one in labor room, I'm already, I'm ready to push eh, I want eh, go easy. Eh, you keep hearing instructions, even for those who have never gone through the experience of pregnancy before. And it push, 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 encouragement, we feel eh, in a need. Even though we are here and we talk about our own race, our own struggles. But Africa more, we pray, oh, I'm got a machine eh, 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 she, I'm come a fish eh. Go and see, look, for the machine, but me, eh, 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 give example eh, oh, my, eh, midila, Nige su Christine eh. Eh, she, she in local, eh, 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 badakwata, after many years, I'm a change eh. She really, in cotton, she may eh, oh, impacting nations within Nigeria, taking the Yoruba nation, you come. During my conversation with Dr. Yefule, Moshe experienced me, I see meeting, colori, calling me. A friend of mine from Nigeria forwarded it to me. One year, kilo de eh, eh, kilo two film forward, meeting eh, one. Moshe, eh, no, but it's the M C, oh, one eh, I'm fair came, we pray, I want your share meeting eh, go. Me Nigeria eh. When you get a response like that, eh, more eh, oku de eh, you want, we eh, you can't give up, pray I want your go. I was sharing that with Dr. Yefule, when he told me the confidence. To share the la, eh, I want a user, me, okay, oh yeah. A lot of them, because of the generation twenty past, twenty suppress, Baba, oh, what the, they need, eh, our lack of, eh, eh. They are sharing the video of things, fact, see, I want, neither eh, I think eh, eh, if you talk. So, eh, 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 make the impact eh, we talk, we just let you know that. Doctor Yefule, I don't know if you want to share your experience eh, I'll just share to people, because eh, it's too bad, but eh, eh, I come out eh, eh, show you the word eh. On twenty, eh, eh, clinical, only gain your call, what you have, eh, so, eh, so, eh, preno, oh, my cry. Oh, the college eh, but many people have brought eh, two day, your color. So, eh, with the panelists, those questions, things are very important, but please, eh, eh, so.
Yeah, eh, she go, after I tell sorrow last week eh.
Yes, sir.
If I, I want got on go viral, mushi to get, more, more information later on.
Okay.
But some of the directory, uh, um, uh, can you program, so I look YouTube. One trend eh, that, that go among the house eh. In your color eh, somebody called me, uh, eh, Yorubani, that only, only access eh, eh, Kano. Also, Kano and Sukutoni business eh, but, one eh, eh, one eh, eh, I mean, they mention different names. But eh, and this has to do with one program to actually about two years ago, they put Fulani. Actually, actually, me, Jino, the Fulani, eh, eh, where we broke it down to them, they pay, full, cause you got on your Fulani, house eh, or house eh, Fulani. Fulani, low coming, to be a, who, house eh, who, to them, parafan eh, who, house eh. Eh, uh, uh, master slave relationship, low ala eh, oh. Bubba eh, so for me, eh, Dr. Thomas, look eh, oh, so for me eh. Um, man to, bubba, eh, 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 oh, he was, house eh, man eh, oh, in utter disbelief. She, uh, as we all know, thing about what traumatized, clinical man, what on pay eh, Stockholm syndrome. Where, eh, eh, you're too traumatized, go, Lumadie, um, Lumadie supporter. Of the, uh, the, uh, the terrorist to, to traumatize eh. So, Fulani had acted as terrorist all the way from eighteen oh four. And af- after many generations, a lot of house eh, so, eh, eh, terrorist born, who are in their midst. People who lie, who cheat, who steal, who will change data, are in their midst. So, but you boy eh, wow, what you might eh, what, one eh, ah, yeah, what is this? But to cut a long story short, he became a believer in the fact, in the way, house eh, has to stand on its own. House eh, must stand on its own and just assert themselves, just like the African Americans. Ni ba, but no, the king Malcolm X, uh, Black Panther, grew, evolved enough to stand on their own, but oh, eh. Uh, what you're doing is wrong and I'm not going to stand for it. And bubwa la, they want eh, when, uh, you wrote, to my, no, look, more do, oh, joke, oh, she show, new, to my ba. And when these people are aware of this truth, is oh, ah, very easy for, eh, bubba. It is what she eh, it is too, so what I was saying, she full, full eh, the law wants eh, eh. I hope it doesn't turn into, um, too much of a, um, uh, trauma or. She, 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 too much physical violence against them. Because the other day, uh, ordinarily, Fulani will go to the house eh, village, that's a power, that's a ballet one, that's a level crew. Better to the, the, uh, 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 to your banle, can you, uh, uh, to your banle, enemy eh, to my, they've reached the wall, be, be a bunny now. And they are go, oh, they, it's now at the wall, he will turn back and come and, 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 and fight you back. I'm got here outside the berecations eh, eh, I hope they are able to under, use understanding and knowledge. That's a bad bar, I want, cool, low, of Fulani, without too much violence against the Fulanis. There more, in that village, five Fulani got killed. Which is something, you worry, usually, house eh, the more I killed, house eh, the more I killed, house eh, the more ballet one, house eh, or minority tribes. And my bad boy, there are many, many, many minor, minority, uh, folks, eh, eh, house eh, eh, house eh, lad, northern, northern Nigeria. I was Zuruwa, I'm better, and she house eh, they're not even related to, to them, what, they're she Fulani. You know, so all these minority, uh, people, along with the house eh, the real house eh, people, watching, wake up. What that is, so, eh, I hope you, this has to stop.
Eh, she go, thank you very much, I'll let you go eh, eh, so, eh, eh, my eh, where she oh, eh, she eh, oh, go beyond, but she. I'm not a man for watching, eh, your sister, eh, M C, eh, your Mofe kebawa, moderate eh, eh, my money eh, eh. Eh, Mofe fee, Dr. Yefule, Mama was Sandra Popola, all our panelists, panelists, Baba eh, um, this eh, M C is here. Baba eh.
Go on, cut eh, do I mean, go on, cut eh, so.
Oh, me quick, kebawa, moderate eh, session eh, I want your, I want no, what's okay, kebawa eh. I want your, I want no, what's okay, eh, kebawa director, eh, see, any of the panelists. Eh, Mama was Sandra Popola, oh, be, eh, you're welcome, uh, any, um, video, Ema. Your video, eh, yeah, key, Ali, spotlighting Ema, Baba eh, Talabi, eh, she daddy, God bless you, sir. Thank you. Yes, eh, Mofe fee, Baba Talabi, she eh, jo, and you can, it's too many eh, eh. Oh, yeah, on anything on Yoruba nation, I'm got a machine eh, eh, I want to, and Baba was tonsolini. Eh, jo, eh, please, can you raise up your hand? Mama was Popola, eh, you're sexy, I'm eh, 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 more eh, 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 but me, eh, 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 it's a video eh. It's a moment like eh, eh, eh.
Oh, serious.
I want you, I want you, I want you, eh.
Seriously, eh, you, 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 eh.
I want on eh.
Oh, come, I want eh, you, eh.
Ah, very, very.
It's you eh.
Eh, you, eh, eh.
I, you, eh.
Eh, your Mama Wa. Popola. Ah, good, oh, yeah. Eh, your anybody, to bunny, Barry. The fair Barry. Low one, oh, he's a Baba, no, she, one, he be. Uh, Baba Rafael. Uh, any question? Anybody, to bunny.
Parita.
Ah, and they saw that, eh, oh, they do, me go to the one, so, we link, we. Eh, daddy, be a more do do, eh, me. Mommy, she saw, Buboyi, so, tell, what, Lini. You pray.
Eh, that's. Eh, well, it's a, it's a, it's a top.
Yes, sir.
You wait, I Baba, you. So, so, I'll be part of it. And money, oh, come, come, don't go, ha, call it, oh, one, be by. Baby, any person, yes, you, yes, come on, the lower. Eh, we just, eh, Baba, what? You run, come on, the man, begging, what, lot, eh, man, part, really. That comes. Eh, but you really, we, but you daddy, bye, eh, but we say, too, Baba, Baba, see, really, 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 right?
Yes. Yes, Eshe Daddy, thank you. Mokoda, Danny, it, eh, Barry. Uh, alone, near, bar, eh, me, what? Come, I just carry show. Come, I rise on, come, I marry you, oh. Uh, I give example, daily far out in Milengo. Uh, near, bar alone, you wait, oh, she man, Lu, language, Mauma, blue. Oh, my, your robot. Oh, my, money, by. Oh, my, car. Through, or, or, so, awareness, awareness, awareness. Uh, or, I pray, oh, la,巴拉, can you resource, consider, cover, man. So, eh, leave, I see, so, eh, more, we are, we pray, directly, pray. Donate. More, we, individuals also have been contacted. If we think, trust, if we, I want to donate to what to be. Uh, more than, more, I want to donate to what from bicycle, what, he said, oh. Oh, what, I want to, so, I'll, you pay, we, no. Oh, you, 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 and. A back, I do, lo. Uh, cause you, but, eh, me, eh, Lou, Lou, eh, me, eh, Baba, you, I'm an sorrow. Eh, could they see, Mokota, and sorrow, ah, sorrow, if, eh, Baba, la, she, eh, big, eh. And we, eh, all, your, by, no, eh. All, your, by, no, eh, and, eh, eh, this, so. So, you pay, best, I'm, get, eh, America. Eh, Buboyi, you know, Lama, so, could, then, America, they come, anyway, tell me, your, Baba, what? Twenty, get, eh, Buboyi, Lama, walk towards. She, I pray, eh, Baba, Leni, you're on, eh, eh, you're on, eh, yeah. And, uh, to body, eh, she, deep, eh, or, your, bunny. Oh, come, Buboyi, what, what, eh, Baow, Alan, eh, Baow, Bubala, do, my, she, so, Daddy. Uh, when we say Daddy, we're referring to everybody in Canada. In America, in Australia, and the other most part of the earth. But she, ma, oh, no, eh, to my, everybody. Eshego, Daddy, thank you, sir.
Thank you, thanks.
Anybody, eh, start, I tell. Start, I tell. We, okay, Mama, she, oh, lots, oh, lots, I, Lou, boy, yeah, I, Saruni. I be a cool, fully, I knew. I be Amala. I be, I call, call, eh, you, Mo, okay, if you call, Lini. And if he, so. Man, what, anybody, but you know, Baba, Talabi. In your, Lini, to, to, eh, so, Lini, for my, your, Baba. Eh, boom, so, Kisha.
I could, oh, Bobo, I'm, eh. Eshegon, eh, cool, I, eh. Thank God for the two hundred. Meeting, thank you. Oh, two, my, she, eh, oh, so, I'm telling, man. Come, I, eh, ki, oh, really, eh, de, you, but, eh, eh, yeah. But, eh, eh. Long, I do, she, eh. Long, I find, eh, eh. So, it, I, eh, who, who, I, eh, with, I, Baba, you, she, eh. Oh, my, I, eh, we, we, eh, you, yeah, oh, la, I, eh, eh, bye. Part, eh, like, Bella, eh, Bella, eh, I follow, eh, I follow, eh, Bella, eh. On, to, come, what, who, no, me, we, Pekama, so, far away, eh, eh. Far away, eh, eh, in villages, in everything. Need to meet, eh, more, eh.